Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. Thank you all for coming. We don't have a large agenda tonight, but we'll cover what's on there. We note that we have a full council present. All members are here. With that, we turn to Councilmember Steve Vincent for our opening ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, we celebrated Pioneer Day this week. And I was trying to find some things that I could present for Pioneer Day and really didn't find anything that I thought was real appropriate. But just as a note, I think all of us have stories within our own genealogy of pioneers, not necessarily maybe pioneers that came to this valley, but pioneers in other things. On my dad's side of our family, his, on my grandmother's, my dad's mother saw on my grandmother's side, her family immigrated here from England. And when they came into, came to New York, they didn't have enough money to come west. And so to make their way west, he was employed by the Transcontinental Telegraph Company. And so he laid telegraph line as he came across the plains to get to Utah. And in his journal, he writes stories about how in a day they would lay a few hundred yards of telegraph line, and then the next morning they would get up and would have to redo it because they had been torn down by Indians that had come by and torn them down. So they'd have to redo those portions that they had put up. So anyway, I think if we all look at our family histories and our genealogy, we've got pioneer blood in all of us, whether they came to the west or they, as in Tom's case, came from a foreign land and came here to America. And so I think we all just need to take time and reflect upon our pioneer heritage. If you could do the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we go to the approval of the minutes of July 19.
Mayor, I move for the approval of the July 19, 2016 minutes.
Second. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passed unanimously. The minutes are approved of July 19. Next, we have a proclamation declaring neighborhood night's month, August 16 is the month for that, and August 2 is our National Night Out here in West Valley City. And I, Bueller? Oh, Tom, excuse me. Councilmember Hune. I was trying to remember. Couldn't quite remember from last week.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just picked up the wrong, the regular study meeting is the 19th, so I couldn't find the, you know, proclamation, so I just found the right one. Here, West Valley City, Utah, proclamation declaring August 2016 as the neighborhood night month and August 2, 2016, as National Night Out 2016 in West Valley City. Whereas West Valley City strives to reinforce the importance of crime prevention awareness in the city, and whereas the crime prevention events have been planned, landed throughout the month of August, and whereas the National Association of TaWatch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drugs, and violence prevention program on August 2, 2016 entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 33rd Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for West Valley City to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas police community partnership, neighborhood safety awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. And whereas the mayor and council, and city council of West Valley City do hereby determine that it is essential that all citizens of West Valley City to be, to city be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in West Valley City. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of West Valley City do hereby proclaim August as National Night Month and August 2, 2016, as National Night Out 2016 in West Valley City, and encourage residents to participate in the activities taking place throughout the city in the month of August.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think I would add comments to that. We encourage, if anyone's listening in, to find out your neighborhood location and participate in this activity. It's a great event, very successful in West Valley City. Many participate in that. Members of the council try and get out to several of those if possible, and certainly members of the city staff go out and participate as well. Fun activity, great to get together with neighbors, and there'll be information, of course, provided there for people as well on things they can do in their neighborhood. So just a great event to have in our city. Encourage, as it says here, our residents to participate in those. So we look forward to meeting many of our citizens out there. Any other comments from the council? That's our proclamation for that. Next is our comment period. We have in all of our meetings an opportunity for citizens to come and make comments. There was no one signed up to do it. Was there anyone here who wanted to make any public comments? Apparently not. A lot of comments, just not public. So if there are no public comments, then we will turn to our city manager. Any comments for tonight?
No, sir, thanks.
Wow, thank you. To our city council, any comments tonight? Anyone bring up okay. With that, then, we go on to item eight on our agenda, Resolution 16-107. This is for the purchase of a data backup system, specifically EMC. This is one that we had talked about before, but we had postponed it because we didn't have the final contract ready. This is $195,000 purchase, but it's from our existing budget, something that we do on a regular basis to make sure we have the backup. Our previous program that we had was not compliant with certain requirements from the federal government on some of our data related to criminal justice. The company was given the opportunity to bring their program up to those requirements. They opted not to do that, so we went with EMC, which is, has the contract for the state of Utah. We were able to get them and not only to meet the requirements of the criminal justice system, but as well, since we had almost run out of room, to expand the storage space so that we have much more. And yes, we have a lot of the data we have to store. Everything we do is the people's business, and so we have to keep records of it, just like you can go online and look at all the agendas and minutes of all our council meetings. In fact, you can go out and listen to any of our council meetings. So there's, but all of our data is stored, and we have to have those available. So with that, we, I think, that's the appropriate introduction there. Yes. Now, this is just to approve the purchase. You'll note that our next item will be to enter into an agreement specifically on that lease purchase. Won't just be a straight buy. We'll go into a lease on that. So with that introduction, then, we will turn to the council, what they want to do with this resolution.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 16-107.
Second. Okay. Motion in a second before us. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll turn to our city recorder to take a roll call vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, in connection with that, we have Resolution 16-112. This is actually to enter into a lease purchase agreement. We're going to do that through U.S. Bancorp, their government leasing and financing portion, for purchasing the data processing equipment. See if I got everything there. This is a, again, 205,000 approximately, because there's some costs associated with that beyond the cost of the actual equipment. Here it says from the general fund, since this is done through a lease, although it's from existing budget. Don't want anyone to think that there's an additional cost. This is the same cost, and so it is already programmed into our budget. Lease is, what, five years, quarterly payments, interest rate 1.92% interest. And then we'll own the equipment at the end of the lease term. With that, then, we'll turn to the council, then, for a motion.
I move for approval of Resolution 16-1212.
Second.
We have a motion in a second before us. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll place that for a vote. Adam Recorder.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have a Resolution 16-113. This is a sales contract, actually between the city and Cloud Sherpas. This is for hosting our Google apps and email and our Google Drive storage. Now, this company has actually taken over another company that we previously had a contract with, and this particular contract is $43,000, but because this is already programmed in, we've been doing this in the past, this will come from our existing budget. Nothing new here, just continuing on this service. Seems like a new one because it's a new company, since they were purchased by, the previous one was purchased by Cloud Sherpas. So with that, to the council for any comments or action. Mayor, I would move for approval of Resolution 16-113. Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to our recorder.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we go to Resolution 16-114. This is to purchase what is called a Timeco 600 sweeper from Inner Mountain Sweeper. This is for our Public Works Department. We have a rotating schedule of replacing these on a regular basis, and there is an optimal point, we try and reach that, where it becomes, before the maintenance costs become higher than it's worth keeping it. So we replace those approximately, I think, every four years is the timeframe. And this is a company that we're familiar with. We've purchased other sweepers from them. It's a $245,000 cost, but we get a trade-in of our old one, because those can be rebuilt and then sold to entities that don't have nearly the work that we do or nearly as many streets. How many miles of streets do we have? Was it, it was, it's like about 200 miles?
Yeah, that sounds right. It's a large number. I turned my Public Works Director, but I let him go for the evening, so I can't do that, so.
Yeah, I know it's 370 miles of sidewalk. That one I remember, but it was 200 approximately on roads. 200 miles of roads that we had to sweep, and we do that regularly. So with that, $164,100 will come from our Stormwater Utility Account. That is the item before us, to the council then.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 16-114.
Second. We have a motion in a second before us. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll go to our recorder for a vote.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And I didn't mention it before, but for, we do have someone here for the first time. These are items that we've talked about before. We have a study session, and so it's not like we're not asking very many questions. We have a discussion on those and ask all our questions, but we have to officially notice it up and discuss it here so that everyone knows we're taking final action. Okay. So with that, then, we go to Resolution 16-115. This is a contract with Staker Parsons Companies for our 2016 asphalt overlay project. And this overall contract is $1.8 million. The project was bid out. This was the most attractive bid cost-wise, and then in our documentation, there's a list of the streets where that will be done. This asphalt payment, rotomill, and overlay, and then various roads and infrastructure repair. And we do that each year. This is an ongoing thing. It does not keep us up on all of our needs on roads in the city, but it does take care of those. That's one we do. Next week, we'll deal with another one for a different type of pavement, asphalt pavement characterization. Oh, later today, that's right, because we got it bumped up, because we're not meeting next week. So thank you, that's right. With that introduction, then, that comes from our Class C road funds, which come ultimately, originally from the gasoline tax, the portion that we did of that. So with that information, to the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 16-115. Second.
Thank you. The motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to our recorder.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we come to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda are items that are relatively routine in nature, do not have a significant policy impact in any way. There are three items on there. One is a sewer easement and temporary construction easement with the Mountain View Corridor. They needed to move a line. This is at 6342 West, 5400 South. This is the authorizations to do that, the temporary construction easement, to go on some property for the construction company to get that in place. The other two items are appointments to our Professional Standards Review Board, Matt McPherson and John O'Donnell.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just interject, I thought it might be appropriate to recognize that one of those two recommended appointees is here in the audience tonight. Mr. John O'Donnell joined us here, so I just thought I would.
Oh, thank you. I wouldn't have known that since I don't know you, but thank you for coming and thank you for your interest and your willingness to serve. We appreciate those who are willing to step forward and help our city. It does a lot to help us in keeping things going in the city. Yes, we have employees, but we have a lot of great people who donate their time and who step forward and do great things in the city. I don't know how many boards and commissions there are, but there are a bunch. A lot of people get involved. With that, then, that's our consent agenda. Typically, we'll take those as a group, but whatever the council decides.
Mayor, I move for approval of the three items on the consent agenda.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, place it for a vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Next, we have new business. Typically, in our process, we will talk about an issue in our study meeting at 4:30 the week prior. This one, due to time constraints, we just discussed it in our earlier meeting tonight. However, we were able to talk about that. This is Resolution 16-119. We need to do it tonight. We will not meet next week, and since it's to work on our roads, we need to do it while the sun shines and the summer's warm. They especially like to work when it's hot, I guess. Anyway, don't want to do it in November and December, so we need to get this going forward. Our asphalt polymer treatment project is similar, but it is to preserve existing roads. It's a polymer mastic seal, and they put it on, you know, high-use roadways to preserve them. It seals it on newer pavements so that it lasts a lot longer. In fact, where they sit it, say it, "to prevent oxidation of the asphalt oil from water infiltration and ultraviolet exposure." In other words, so it doesn't break up from the water and the sun, I guess is the way you would put that. $315,000 from our State Highway Projects Fund. That's the issue before us. And of course, if anyone interested in seeing where that will be done, they can check on the website, and that information is available. This contract will be awarded to Morgan Pavement. With that introduction, to the council.
Mayor, I would move for approval of Resolution 16-119.
Second. We have it properly before us. Any further discussion?
Just to note, as was noted in the previous meeting, in the actual Resolution, paragraph three, we do have the wrong entity listed. We need to have that corrected, but since the motion was for Morgan Pavement, then I think that we're good as far as tonight's.
Yes. On the actual document, that has been corrected, the official document that I will sign. Yes, there was a, accidentally left the name of another company in there on part of it. That has been fixed, not on the website yet, but on the actual document. And in fact, on the resolution itself, that would be down in the be resolved area, item number three, where it says Ridge Rock. That has been corrected to Morgan Pavement. And it is assumed from the makers of the motion in second that that was included there with that correction, just to make sure. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, I had checked, and they had already changed it, but not on, we can't get the website site updated quite that quick. But they are quick. They got the actual document that I'm going to sign changed. With that, then, we have the motion before us. Any further discussion? Then to our recorder.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
And Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. That completes our scheduled work in this meeting. You will note that immediately following this, we will have two other short meetings for our Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority. I think I got them reversed. It's Housing Authority, then RDA. And those are fairly brief.
RDA first.
RDA first. Okay. RDA first, then housing. Okay, with, and so stay tuned. You'll just see it, seem to see, we'll go to that. I think we're done. Any final comments for this meeting? Seeing none, one final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor of adjourning. Our regular city council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The regular city council meeting is adjourned. I call to order the special regular meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency. Note that all members are present. We have two items of business on our agenda tonight, the first being Resolution 16-12. Mr. Powell, would you please introduce that?
Thank you, sir. So both of these items are in conjunction with our MC Suites Hotel project, which has been up in operation very successfully for a number of years. And as we have had opportunity to improve the situation over there, both from a management standpoint and from an improvement standpoint, we've taken advantage of those. This is another step in that process. The board will remember that upon our initial involvement with this project, has always been our intent to be able to dispose of that property in the best manner as is suited to the interests of the RDA and the city. And this is, once again, an effort in that area. The first item is for consideration and possible approval of an asset management agreement between West Valley Hotel Holdings for the MC Suites Hotel, as I mentioned. And the second one, which I'll just go on to describe since it is concerning the same project, is for an option to purchase by, again, the same entity, West Valley Hotel Holdings, in the future, should that arrangement be advantageous for both parties.
So that option is exercisable by the LLC, but also could be denied at that time by any of the city, or they're actually purchasing the option, would have the right to exercise that upon conditions.
Yeah, they would have the right to exercise that option. We could decline that agreement, but both parties have to be agreeable to it, if I remember correctly, and that is a correct mark. Okay.
Any questions that any member of the board has, or request for additional information, or a motion would be approved. Let's take them one at a time, starting with 1612.
Mr. Chairman, for approval of Resolution 16-12?
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion to the motion? And please call for a roll call vote.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Northvelt?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now have Resolution 16-13, which has been also introduced by Mr. Powell. Any questions or discussion with respect to Resolution 1613? Not that a motion would be in line?
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of Resolution 16-13.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion to the motion? Please call for a roll call vote, then.
Mr. Northvelt?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our business tonight, what has been published on our agenda. We have one final motion to conclude.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. I call to order our special meeting of the Housing Authority. Note that we've had an opening ceremony and that all are present. We have just one resolution. Mr. Powell, would you please introduce that?
Thank you, sir. Yes, in our continuing and successful, I mean, and effort that's gone Yes, in our continuing and successful, I might, and effort that's gone on for a number of years now, as we have acquired and then partnered with developers and redeveloped different projects in the Fairborns area, we're bringing to you a proposed purchase this evening of a residential property at 3107 West Lehman Avenue for the price of $230,000.
Thank you. We have a resolution before us. It's appropriate for a motion from the Housing Authority.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of Resolution 1608.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll turn to our recorder for the vote.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Buehler?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
And Chairman Northfeld?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our business. One more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.